All right, calling the meeting to order at 6:02, please. We still don't have a chair officially, so let's go ahead and elect a pro temp. And then I'll give up control, so I'll nominate Keven again.
One second, we need a motion to call meeting to order first.
Oh, we need the actual motion, okay. I'll make the first motion then.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
And for clarification, for all those listening and interested or waiting, my understanding from legal counsel is that a new chair cannot be announced into a full council meeting. So that announcement will occur tomorrow, which is the need for a pro temp.
So we need a motion to appoint this male as chair of whoever has chair pro temp.
Motion to nominate Keven as pro temp.
Yeah, I'll second, yeah.
Motion carried. Next on the agenda. Person registered to...
Nope, roll call. Reed, it's top to bottom.
Dr. Fisher? Ms. Bell?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Think she's on her way.
She's on her way.
Ms. Thompson's here. Next.
Uh, it's probably, I should have did that.
Sorry, you guys are going a little fast. We're looking second for the appointment of Mr. Thompson as chair pro temp was by who? By Mel?
Yeah.
Okay. And you just conducted a roll call, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
We're waiting for Ms. Thomas, okay.
Motion to adopt last month, last year's minutes.
Uh, motion to set an adopted agenda first.
If Ms. Thompson's not here, you need a motion to excuse her.
Okay, uh, motion to excuse Ms. Thompson. Thomas, Thomas.
Did I say Thompson?
I don't know.
I'm sorry. Please excuse me and, uh, yes. Second, uh, we need a second for excusing Ms. Thom- Thomas. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now it's you, Keven.
Motion to adopt the minutes for today?
Set and adopt the agenda first.
Motion to set and adopt the agenda?
All right, I'll make the motion to set and adopt the agenda.
Next, um...
Now.
Is minutes of minutes.
Yes.
Got you, I get those mixed up.
Reed, top to bottom.
Motion to approve minutes from previous meeting on Monday, December 16th, 2024.
Yeah, did you?
I changed it on electronic copy.
That's fine, okay. Matter of fact, you can update the same thing on this one too, if you haven't. All right, so motion to...
Who made the motion?
I don't know if anybody did.
Okay.
Uh, motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
And first. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to get carried. Next on the, where is, chair report, uh, We Thrive Report?
Let's go in. What's your We Thrive Report?
Oh, I didn't even hear that. Okay, uh, we're starting off the year with a class of bingo size on January 24th is the first day we start. And it'll go through all, uh, April the 3rd. And behind that, we have the cooking class, healthy cooking class from April 24th to June 12th. And after that, we'll have Tai Chi, but I don't have the date of that yet.
Is there a time for these?
Yes, uh, it'll be on Tuesdays and Thursdays from, uh, 6:00 to 7:00. Uh, is that, I think it's 10 weeks.
Okay, and that's gonna be bingo sizes Tuesday, Thursday, 6:00 to 7:00. Is that the same thing for cooking class?
No, cooking class isn't until April, April 24th.
And that'll be how many days a week?
Uh, two days a week, but it'll be the same time.
Same time, okay.
Unless they change it.
And Tai Chi, we're waiting to hear details?
Right.
We have, so bike stuff.
Let's see, yeah, we did talk about the bikes, but I don't think they figured that out yet.
Okay.
That was Pat's thing.
Right.
So she has to, uh, get in contact with whoever has the bike so they can check the bikes out and then go to Mobo Boys.
Okay, okay. Mobo, I guess.
Right, so I guess she's gonna try to do that in, uh, April to give the bikes out. But they only wanna give them out to people in the golf manor community. So the bikes been sitting so long, so somebody will have to come in and check the tire pressure and everything on the bikes. And I guess that somebody's gonna measure for the helmets.
Mm-hmm, police, yeah.
Okay, so, that's all I have.
I feel like it was one more thing that y'all was on.
Oh, yeah, the, uh, food boxes.
Yeah, we need somebody to get trained, uh, this, I wanna say is called Safe Serve.
Right.
Okay.
I forgot about that, yeah. Safe Serve, is that, we've been talking about the same thing, it's, it's two different food.
So if you, distribution of, we're gonna have either here or we're gonna select somewhere in Golf Manor for the public.
Okay.
We just need somebody to complete the certification.
Right.
Therefore, everyone's gonna be responsible to make sure people are wearing gloves, you know, doing a proper PPE precaution.
They talked about their long calendar.
Okay, so what she's referring to, you know how we got the little libraries, but instead making them food pantries?
Yeah.
And when we wait on like a certification or something?
I didn't hear you.
Are we waiting on like a certification or something for that?
Uh, we waiting on how we can get it done.
Is that, so I don't know if she wrote the resolution or ordered us to make that happen, it, it never came to council.
She has to find out what Shayla does, Shayla left, so Karen has to go through...
Got you, got you, got you, she gotta get called up.
Right.
So, um...
So Shayla had to size the boxes, uh, who's gonna do them, and this and that and the other, then we had to go through some other stuff. But we're not there yet.
Okay, that just seems like, um, a phone call to our new rep for We Thrive.
Do what?
Does that just call for a phone call to the new rep for We Thrive and talk and see if we can get Shayla's email?
She was here, and then we got a meeting at, uh, 2:30 today. And so she's gotta catch up.
Yeah, it came up in a meeting today, and she has access to, uh, all the information from Shayla before she left.
Okay, that's...
And so she just have to see if it's, what's all in there, um, and, cause I don't think, it, it never came through here, did it? But we talked about that, but I vaguely remember learning that we might not be able to do it at all because who does a liability fall on? Or somebody, but other neighborhoods do it, so I don't get why we can't do it?
Yeah, I think that was, that was just the last part of the conversation, that she was gonna find out more.
Okay.
About like how it's done and who's liable and how they...
Okay. So...
Are we not gonna do it?
Um, it sounded like they were gonna move forward, but they just wanted to find out more.
Okay, cause I was gonna say that. It stopped there right there.
So I think we're still depending on...
Okay, so we are, so We Thrive, we're, we're gonna be the ones responsible for finding that?
But I, I think the last conversation was Shayla.
With Shayla was gonna do it, okay.
Okay.
All right, so we'll, we'll wait and see what's in that, uh, folder, if anything, and if not, we'll figure out what to do.
We still have to go home.
Right.
All right. Um, Mel, we talked about Juneteenth.
Uh-huh.
And the start of all of that.
Yeah, um, so I guess some updates here. So Juneteenth will be scheduled, actually, I think it's Friday the 13th. So we try to have it the Friday before the actual holiday, so the Golf Manor celebration is Friday before the holiday. I think that falls on Friday the 13th, uh, probably from 4:00 to 9:00 PM, which is why we have always had it. So we do need to start, um, kinda getting the advertisement and stuff going. I mean, it seems early, but it'll be here very quickly. Uh, but also the 4th of July, I'm gonna help, uh, David Fisher run that. Uh, and so the 4th of July, normally we actually have the celebration in Golf Manor on the 4th of July. Um, but the 4th of July falls on a Friday this year. And also, uh, uh, Reed, Captain Reed always, uh, has advocated for maybe putting it on a date other than 4th of July because he leads the parade, and it's hard for him to get a bunch of people to come to parade because they're already getting assignments to other parades in other neighborhoods. And he's like, if it's on a different day, then I can get us a bigger parade. But all that to say, we're gonna try it on Sunday, the 6th this year. So those are two dates that we have set for both, so Juneteenth, it's Friday the 13th, and 4th of July is gonna be like the, the celebrations here in Golf Manor will be, um, the 6th, Sunday, July 6th. Um, so we're gonna start all of the planning and all that stuff for that ASAP.
So where are we doing it on the 6th?
Huh?
Why are we doing it on the 6th?
For two different reasons, one, it's, 4th of July's on a Sabbath this year, but two, Reed thinks he can get us a bigger parade.
The Sabbath is on Saturday.
It's Friday, it's...
Sundown on Friday.
Sundown on Friday, so the parade's on a sundown, it's...
Uh, okay, I'm not gonna answer that for, would you, would, would you come out midday?
My assumption is that Mr. Fisher is unable to commit to that date.
Okay.
That's the issues for the possibility.
Right.
So... I, that's, that's a whole other thing, so...
I mean, that was, that was, um, it was a couple people who wanted it on that day, so...
The concern is that you need a lot of employees, and that's asking them to come in on a Sunday.
Okay.
After the holiday.
Yeah.
On a holiday weekend, so we just need to check with the department head to make sure everybody's cool with that.
Okay, so...
I'm not up to date with the conversation that's occurred with David. I know that he is typically kind of run that whole, uh, kosher hot dogs and everything. Um, I know that significant anonymous contributions have come in to support that, which I'm thinking, um, you know, part of the conversation would be, would those still come in and could someone from the kosher community, uh, I don't mean kosher community, I mean like, someone who, um, is licensed, I guess, to oversee it being a kosher event, um, from our community. David may have, uh, some intel on that.
Well, David's always been that supervisor.
Right.
So if he can't commit, it would have to be somebody else to do it and that for Golf Manor.
Oh, yeah, all I was trying to say is that David may have some ideas about someone else that could step in.
Yeah.
Um, and of course, it'd be a significant overhaul for David to still be basically involved except for in the planning, except for that day, given that he has experience in doing that.
Right.
I'm just trying to say I'm not up to date with the conversation. If he said, yeah, it should definitely be on a Sunday instead of on that Friday.
Yeah.
Then, then that's it, I think.
Yeah, okay, so I will go back and talk to Reed and David then and confirm, and then I guess...
I understand.
Yeah, okay.
So I want, I wanna make sure that the departments are a part of the decision, so...
So other than the police department, you're talking about, uh, maintenance, okay?
It hits them pretty heavily.
Does it, okay? Um, and about bikes, basically, I think that Ms. Pat is gonna lead that effort. Um, so that, so she's already talked to the police who have agreed to do the measuring of the helmets.
Right.
Um, and so the police just said, pick a date, and they're, based on some feedback from, uh, Recreation Commission, they're gonna try to do it in the spring, and maybe invite Mobo, she's gonna contact, what is the gentleman's name who heads Mobo? That's the name of the organization, and the bike servicing?
Fraser, yeah, Fraser Cunningham.
Okay, so she's agreed to reach out to him to see if he would be interested in helping, you know, for example, check the bike pressure and the usability of the bike since they've been sitting for so long.
Who's reaching out to him?
Uh, Ms. Pat.
Oh, okay.
So it's unclear if this is gonna, like, We Thrive, is this a, like a We Thrive effort? If it's a rec effort, a community engagement effort, like, but I think she's just gonna take the lead for it.
I'd advise in terms of the, uh, charter of, um, community engagement, that it's, there's been a drift into being involved in planning events and everything. My, uh, feeling on that is to the extent that events are health-related, that should all be in collaboration with We Thrive.
Okay.
Cause that's, that's the function of We Thrive, is help events, and we can get outside funding to help with that kind of stuff. So that, I'm thinking, that should always be led by We Thrive, and, uh, we can certainly, as a village, support We Thrive and...
Okay.
Um, successful accomplishment of that stuff. Community engagement, and this kinda goes to the topic, which maybe I'm, I'm jumping ahead, as far as what we're looking at for like a year of activities and everything, community engagement has always been, um, chartered to be about getting the word out about our events and about the needs of, um, of the municipality to the residents, and getting the needs of the residents to the municipality. Um, so that's things like, let's, uh, assign who's gonna work on making that dynamic better. Like, do we need a newsletter, you know, do we need to update what's going on, on the, you know, that kind of stuff? Do we need to, um, how do we find, there's, there's chairs open for different committees? How do we get the word out about that, and setting those kind of missions into play, getting that kind of, uh, information out to the community? The event planning stuff, I'm thinking that it's getting the word out about that, okay? We've got, um, there's certain events that I think that the, um, that council is very interested in. Uh, as a member of council, Juneteenth, the 4th of July event, uh, to the extent that, um, those events aren't being solely run by Recreation Commission, then I would say that that's council getting involved with that, with like lia- with our liaison to the Recreation Commission, um, kinda spearheading all that kind of stuff. I know that we have a number of council members that have been very passionate about certain, and residents as well, passionate about certain events that they wanna just, you know, take charge of, and I believe that council should support, uh, those individuals proper. Um, uh, initiation of, uh, of those events should probably be by way of Recreation Commission because a lot of the, you know, the, um, the rules around getting permission for use of the park, uh, to, um, to residents and things like that all goes through Recreation Commission. I'll be speaking to them about kind of formalizing what those forms look like that they should be, you know, having to fill out. We need to come up with, you know, does it cost a dollar for a resident to do it versus $300 or something for a non-resident? That, that kind of stuff. But I wanted, um, in terms of relevancy to this body and its planning, um, uh, into your question about how do we, how do we sort out what is, what is Recreation Commission, um, what is community engagement, um, and what is We Thrive? Uh, that's my input on it, We Thrive is about communication, it isn't...
Community engagement.
Yeah, community engagement, what did I say?
We thrive.
We, okay, sorry.
No, we, we get the differences in the roles of the three, but that's one that can fall under. Like, the bike safety course can, or the bike safety day can fall into either three, we just have to decide if it even matters or which one to fall under.
How, what's the rationale for it, all in the community engagement?
Because it's gonna be involving the police and getting, like, children and, like, literally, it is engaging the community.
Okay, I'm thinking, my, uh, I, I understand that, I hear that. My sense of it is that it's, it's completely focused on communication, so to be involved in that, getting the word out about that. My concern is that, I mean, I think these are great events, and I wanna see them go off successfully, and it may well be that the individuals on this committee are the most well-positioned to make sure that it's successful. That may just be the bottom line of it, all right? But what I'm saying is, I'm concerned that, um, we can spend, uh, a calendar year planning events and not have any headway on developing mechanisms to better get the word out to people. I think getting the word out to people at events is fantastic, um, but to only be doing that at events as opposed to being a, a body that says, okay, well, what are the events? We're gonna be there, and we're gonna be making sure that we're getting email addresses of people that wanna get their email addresses out. Um, that we're gonna be creating an email list to make sure those people are up to date on what the next events are gonna be. I just want some dedicated people that are just doing that, cause that's not getting done.
It's like a marketing type.
Very much so, but it's not just, a lot of times when we're thinking of marketing, uh, that might be biased to think that it's just, you know, image that we're putting out there as opposed to actually getting input from people. Yeah, and, and being, uh, not just about us, but making sure that we're finding out what...
The community.
Yeah, what the community wants and getting that, getting that in. There, there's a role for that in all events, because events engage community to that point, absolutely.
No, no, that's a great idea, I remember last year we was kind of somewhat talking about that too, with how we can very get the word out for our residents, you know? We wanna hear back from residents, residents, we want to know, hear about their concerns and... It's a good idea, I have a couple ideas on that. You ready?
Uh, I'm trying to think of other events that we need to talk about, like, is that...
You said the Fall Festival, that was the last thing we talked about, what year is it, uh, of, man, year 78?
Would this be C7, what, this year?
Um, last year would have been...
We had C75, 76, so this would be 78 this year? Okay.
So we're coming up on our 80th in 27.
Yeah. So, and I think there's supposed to be a Labor Day event this year too? I don't have any intel on the Fall Festival or Labor Day.
What, I think there are things that inherently Recreation will do and things that community engagement will do.
Right.
Like, should Recreation do yard sales? Probably not. That should probably come out of community engagement.
Okay.
Does Recreation do the buy-nothing spot, if we do that again? Probably not, that needs comedic community engagement. And I think what would be helpful for the administration is, and, and I've encouraged Recreation to do this, we need a list.
Right.
What they wanna do next year, not just for budgeting, but for staffing purposes.
Yeah.
I think that would be helpful out of this committee also.
Yeah, so those are the four events, I think, that they kinda, so Juneteenth, 4th of July, I think Labor Day and the Fall Festival slash C78, I think are the four events this year.
Is that, is that set out of Recreation?
Yeah, I think kinda collectively, yeah.
So with 4th of July though, it sounds like this committee's driving 4th of July.
I wouldn't say the committee, I would help, I'm gonna co-lead it with somebody.
Okay.
I'm, I'm literally just trying to put the dates out right now, let's figure out, like, to give people a heads up on that's what's coming.
Cause that, I think one of the things that would help us too is if we can create some kind of marketing material that has all the events on it between We Thrive, community engagement, and Recreation, and get that out to the public. Um, then there's that whole issue about the newsletter, you know?
Yeah, I, I think, I think we've kinda settled on postcards instead of newsletters.
I'm doing what?
Settling on postcards instead of newsletters.
Rather than...
So, like, no stories. You don't need a full-length story or anything like that, put a postcard, QR code to either the calendar or the app, and put at least those four events that we know are coming up. We just have to decide on the dates and just send it out.
Well, the other thing to remember too is we probably have 315, I think, was on my, my last time, on our email list that we can actually email the people.
Okay.
With an email blast through mail truck.
Okay.
So, and that's, getting that calendar together will allow us to do all that.
Right. Um, so I think that's it, that's the only things I have to update for as far as events. But I, we've talked, is there an update on...
Uh, about the food store moving.
Mm-hmm.
So, and communicating with Diego Sanchez, who is our, um, third person, I don't know if you, any of the emails that I copied on?
No, I didn't get it, no. No, actually, I'm not in that one because the guy was supposed to call me back about getting into the email, so I'm not in there and I did not respond.
Um, I mean, it's in, I'm, I'd like to figure out that there, kinda make sure they can have access to your shop. But, um, it sounded like this is a unique setup for them, that they usually work with an upper-profit organization, like, on T3s, and not just tactic of tax-exempt organizations. So he was trying to figure out if there's some way that they can still work with us or partner with us. And, and my feeling is if it's like too complicated for them and, you know, it doesn't fit the template that they've been used to working with, um, eating my two thoughts are either we reach out to organizations that are part of Golf Manor and ask them if it's something that they would like to, uh, take care of for the event of Golf Manor. Um, and the second is really just to communicate with the community about what other food store, um, uh, food banks are available within, you know, certain radius, but, um, just making sure that the community has, um, access to that information, so that they can access.
You'd like a list of different food banks and, um, pantries that's local?
Yes, I was trying to bring that together, it's gonna be helpful anyways for different needs out, but those are likely two thoughts moving forward with this.
And so to be clear, when we were talking about the safe, safe serve, that was regard to that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I, I do apologize, that's why I got...
No, no, it's two different, you know, we explore it food two different ways, two different routes.
Really look, need to be careful, oh, they decide whether or not they're, they'll enjoy it.
Something else, see, that was like the last thing that I heard all right then. So is that this email bit?
I mean, do you have one, do you have one, Ms. Phyllis?
Hmm?
You got an update, anything?
No.
No?
No comments, questions, concerns? Okay, all right. Um, just announcing that the next community engagement meeting will be, well, it is scheduled for Monday, February 10th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. It's our own time, everybody okay with that date and time?
Uh, one other announcement too, uh, we got a new, uh, community calendar, I think it's a big deal. It actually looks really good.
On, on the website?
On the website, and you actually hit calendar and it's there, like, it even makes sense of how the links work.
Well, I, I'm down with the, um, app today, I'm like, oh, I got a meeting, and then like, I'm like, okay, that's nice.
So, anybody paying attention, you got a good-looking calendar on the website now, so...
I got a question about that, I, I agree, um, and we've, we've got a dedicated person as well, staff-wise, to make sure that that's, uh, stays current and everything. Um, I had noticed a glitch when I'm viewing the calendar, um, on a cell phone, on a mobile device, that if you click on an event, all right? So, you know, today, two events are listed, right? And you click on one of them and it creates a, a pop-up that's cut in half. I can't read the entire thing on a mobile device, so I wanted to ask if we, uh...
That's off the website?
No, it's off the, uh, app.
Or off the app.
So are you talking about on the app or if you were to look at it from a mobile view on the website?
I don't have to...
Cause it's like on the app, yeah, we, we just realized that, yeah.
So I wanted to see if anybody else was experiencing that, cause I'm experiencing that, it should probably...
I just saw that the same way, okay.
I'm gonna try clicking it, but I know the app, the, the full calendar, you can't scroll to see the rest of the calendar. But I never clicked, but it's, it's the same problem, I'm sure. So maybe just look at it from the web-based version for now, but it looks good.
When, uh, when user-friendly or glitches, uh, things, uh, pop up, what, uh, what do you suggest, Ron, in terms of how that could be just, do folks just notify you of, of issues like that?
Yeah, I'll talk to the vendor to see what they can do to fix that, cause I'm, I'm seeing here, let's see if I do more details.
It prevented me...
Yeah, it doesn't even, it doesn't even go to the whole description.
Yeah.
Right, it, it prevents me from even seeing what, uh, what the committees were tonight. I had to like go to my laptop to find out which, which two committees, you know, are meeting tonight, so...
Yeah, no, let me track from the, set it from the app, let's see what it looks like on the web-based website, let's try that.
Yeah, we'll see what we can do to troubleshoot that.
Yeah.
So the, on, at least on my phone, from the web-based version, you can see the whole thing.
It's okay, all right, so it appears to just be the app.
Yeah, it's just the app.
Just the app, um, when you, when you look at the website... Just the app, um, when you, when you look at the website from a mobile phone, it's fine. It is just the app where you have that issue, if you're looking at the calendar through the app.
Although this does, looks like the web-based version, even though I'm on my phone.
It does.
It doesn't look like a, a mobile-based version, I don't know.
Well, when I, when I go to, we just go to the website itself.
Yeah.
Which is odd, so, yes, we'd be odd if that's what's happening, why is it a problem if you go there from the app? But it's not a problem if you go there from just the website.
Even had the calendar from the app, and maybe it's on, your calendar, but you still can see it on the actual mobile. Motion to adjourn meeting?
I'll second it.
I'll, uh, uh, just suggest, I, um, we've got an hour reserved for it, y'all can, um, you know, there wasn't anything else on the agenda, but I, uh, as I said, I'd like to see this body working on, uh, you know, having working sessions as well, if you've got extra time, if you got planned to have a working session on, uh, what are the ideas on how do we better get information from the community, how do we better get information out to the community? There's been a good review of the different assets that we have in place, as far as the calendar, um, as far as the email list, that has so many, uh, you know, addresses on it. Um, there could be things, you know, conversations could be about, uh, making sure whenever we're having an event, which I believe we've been doing this every time we have an event, collecting more email addresses, um, that kind of stuff, but kind of formalizing or operating, uh, operationalizing, those kind of things, so nobody has to think about it when we have an event, it's just like already in place, we know what we're doing in each of those events. Um, those would be the kinds of things that I'm wanting to make sure that, that this body is working on.
There was a motion in the second?
Yes.
Yes, um, I did the motion.
No, I, I'm just saying, when you, points of order, there was a motion in the second, there was discussion, Mr. Dantmore emphasized the importance of working on communication within the community, but the motion, the second stands, so that would need to be voted on. You would, the, that's all.
Aye.
I was gonna say, how would you vote on that?
You, you would ask for an all in favor.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion being carried.
And we're done.